Thank you. Thank you, Father. We wish to thank very beautiful people. Thank you, Father. Do you have some creativity, Father?
I do have some. So, um, thank you, Father. Like you do. Yeah. Yes.
City Council is now in session. Please be advised that Councilman Goldberg has been excused. At this time, please stand for the invocation by Vice Mayor Bennett, which will be followed by a moment of silence in support of those in Ukraine who are fighting for their freedom. And we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Father, most holy and everlasting Father, we come down to give you thanks. We thank you for another day. We thank you for life. And we ask you, Father, as we go through this meeting, that whatever we say and do, we pleasing unto you. Father, we ask you to bless all our citizens, bless this country, Father, and we give you the honor and the praise. These things were asked in your son's name. Amen. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Here.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Mayor Dooman.
Here.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of March the 2nd, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. The Code of Virginia is amended. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened to close meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is ordered. It was the pleasure of Council. Councilman Fawcett.
Moved to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams.
Second.
We have a second one. Councilman Williams, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion was approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Approval of the minutes from the September 9th, 10th, 2021 special meeting is the next item for consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Moved for approval.
Councilman Johnson.
Second.
With a motion for approval, Councilman Williams, second. Councilman Johnson, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the adoption of the entire agenda. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding public hearing item number 10. Mr. Manager, please provide City Council with an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Member, members of council, listed on your agenda under item 10 is a public hearing to consider, an appeal of the decision of the Historic Landmarks Commission in regard to certificate of appropriateness request, HLC 2021-00042, for property located at 2008 Clay Street, zoning map 34G18, Block A, Parcel 43. Staff is in receipt of a letter which has been provided to you at your dais from the applicant's attorney dated February 28th, 2022, requesting to withdraw his client's appeal to the Historic Landmarks Commission denial of his application. At this time, I would ask City Council consideration of a motion to amend the March 2nd, 2022 City Council agenda to remove public hearing listed as item 10 from this evening's agenda and adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented.
Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding public hearing item number 10, please note that the City Manager has advised that the applicant is requested to withdraw the project. Therefore, a motion would be in order to amend the agenda to remove public hearing item number 10 from the agenda and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented at this time. Councilman Fawcett.
I move to approve on the removal and to accept the agenda as it is.
Councilman Ward.
Second.
Second. Councilman Ward, do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
No, Mayor Dooman. There are no agenda speakers at this time.
Please present the items for consideration.
Item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Risk Sharing Association for the City of Suffolk Risk Management Program. Item number eight, an ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the Code of the City of Suffolk to incorporate the International Fire Code 2018 addition into the Fire Prevention Code of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. And item number nine, an ordinance to rename the Whaleyville Recreation Center to the Curtis R. Miltier Senior Recreation Center.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, item seven, the city has received $5,000 from the Virginia Risk Sharing Association in support of the city's risk management program to assist with the purchase of prescription safety glasses for employees who wear prescription glasses and are required to wear safety glasses. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grant funds, uh, grants of consolidated grants fund for FY22 by $5,000, and there's no local match. Item eight, the city utilizes the Virginia statewide fire prevention code and adopts it as part of the City Code Section 38-73. This ordinance provides for the adoption of the 2018 Virginia statewide fire prevention code, which provides for the Commonwealth's latest fire code revisions. Item nine, the City Council, after February 16th, City Council meeting, by motion, requests an ordinance to rename the Whaleyville Recreation Center to the Curtis R. Miltier Senior Recreation Center. Upon adoption, staff will schedule a future event to memorialize the facility's renaming.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Moved for approval.
Councilman Johnson.
Second.
A motion for approval from Vice Mayor and a second from Councilman Johnson, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our only public hearing was item number 10, and the applicant has withdrawn the request for rezoning, and this item has been removed from the agenda. We'll now move to ordinances, and we have an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to accept a deed open space easement over the common passive open space within the cluster subdivision plat of River Club Phase 1 and 1A, tax map number 12, parcel 25, account number 302081000, and this is FSB 2021-00022. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, Acting Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development will provide the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. You occasionally see these when we have cluster subdivisions that are seeking approval of their final plat. For cluster subdivisions in the city, the passive open space, in order to comply with the Virginia Open Space Land Act, is required to be held in a conservation easement that the, uh, the city holds in essentially perpetuity for as long as the subdivision, uh, exists. And this easement in question would essentially ensure the passive open space of the River Club Phase 1 and Phase 1A subdivision be conserved, like I said, in perpetuity. There we go. The proposed River Club subdivisions located in the Northern Growth Area of the city, designated suburban use district, and it's located on Bob White Lane, primarily to the north of Bob White Lane, but there is a large section that will be held as passive open space on the south side. It's bounded by Bennett's Creek on the west and the north and located north of Quaker Nick subdivision and west of the Glen Forest subdivision, to give you an idea of where it is. Upon completion, 377 single-family detached lots are proposed for the River Club subdivision. However, Phase 1 and Phase 1A will contain a combined 24 lots. In total, there are 41 and a half acres of passive open space that would be held as it relates to this deed of open space for the maintenance of, um, passive open space. And if you elect to approve this ordinance, you're authorizing the City Manager to execute a deed of open space easement to accept the conservation easement as it relates to Phases 1 and 1A of the River Club subdivision. That concludes my presentation, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Fawcett.
I move for to approve the ordinance as presented.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second motion.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We do have one resolution this evening. It is a resolution in support of the Rosenwald Place 1 and Rosenwald Place 2 developments application to the Virginia Housing Development Authority for the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will provide the staff report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. So before you is a resolution of support for low-income housing tax credit programs for the Rosenwald Place 1 and Place 2 projects on East Washington Street, 806 East Washington Street, to be exact. Just a little bit of background related to our staff support, and hopefully to agree, just by way of, uh, history, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program subsidizes acquisition, construction, and rehab of affordable housing for low-income and moderate-income tenants. This is overseen by Virginia Housing, formerly known as the Virginia Housing Development Authority. Within your approved 2035 comprehensive plan, there are at least four different subsections that speak to the support and encouragement and potentially financing of low-income housing in the City of Suffolk. On the screen is the site that exists today at 806 West Washington Street. There are two completed units. The, the site has lagged for a little over 10 to 12 years now. And so what is being proposed by, uh, by the Woda Cooper Group would be outlined in white. The gray would represent what is there today. This would be a total of 120 units. This is a concept plan. This is a concept plan that on a high level looks to work within our ordinances. I'm not asking you or looking for your support on the concept plan. You're not approving the concept plan. You're not approving the rendering. You're approving the resolution of support for the financing of it. But wanted to give you a, uh, a feel for what you will most likely see, assuming that they are, um, approved in their request for financing. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Resolution has been presented for council's consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Williams.
Yes, may I move to approve?
A motion for approval, Councilman Williams, Councilman Fawcett.
Second his motion.
Second, Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We do have a staff report this evening, which would be the Southeastern Public Service Authority landfill flyover update. Mr. Manager.
Yes, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works, will provide the update on the landfill flyover project. One thing real quickly to re, uh, remember is this is tied to the conditional use permit for the next cell of the landfill at SIPS.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. I hope this is a good news story for us. As the manager has noted, this is actually tied to some conditions that City Council placed upon the next cell of the SIPS landfill that required SIPS to find and address some highway safety issues that were ongoing accessing into the landfill. So what I have before you this evening is a series of slides to kind of brief you on this. These, these slides actually were presented to the SIPS board back on January the 26th by Mr. Michael Davis, one of the deputy district engineers out at VDOT. And rather than reinventing the slides, I just decided to use his slides, but I'll preview those for you. So again, excuse me, this is a safety improvement project to address conditions. As you may recall, about two years ago, SIPS actually had an employee who lost their life out there at this crossover one morning on the way to work. There's becoming more and more traffic coming out of downtown Suffolk or Portstun Boulevard that comes through this crossover, not to go into the SIPS landfill, but actually do a U-turn and go back west on the 58 bypass. So again, this is becoming more and more of a critical location. The approvals that you're going to see in just a moment, this is actually a two-phase project. Phase 1, which is the piece that SIPS is required to do, addresses eliminating that at-grade crossing out there on the 58 six-lane section, as we call it. Phase 2, uh, staff will be reviewing and trying to find additional funding in the future, will also help with some of the weaving areas and making that even safer as we go forward. But it was, Phase 2 is not a requirement of the SIPS, um, conditions. Uh, what you see there, again, essentially what happens is traffic's coming either down 58 eastbound or coming out of downtown Suffolk on Portstun Boulevard, where today they would normally, uh, get over in the left turn lane, take that crossover, and try to get across six lanes, actually three, four lanes of traffic running at them. Again, normally it seems like they're running about 90 miles an hour. They're just flying out there. What we're going to do today is we will go past that crossover. That crossover will actually get closed and be taken completely out of service, so there will not be an opportunity to cross there. But traffic will travel just a little bit further east and then start off to the right-hand side in a ramp and, and a ramp, and a ramp that rises up and goes to a bridge structure that then flies over both the eastbound and the westbound lanes, which is shown in orange. That's, that's the bridge portion of that, takes you across that highway and then does a loop back, brings you back, and ultimately drops you down, and traffic will then go into the landfill without having to interact with the traffic. Traffic coming from Bowers Hill that wishes in the landfill will also go through that weave motion as they come off the bridge and around that circle. Again, at this point, that's a little bit short, but it does meet minimum design standards. As a part of this design with VDOT and with SIPS, we again looked at what ultimately do we need out there to maintain the safest condition? That's where Phase 2 comes in, which is generally the items you're seeing in green. And again, that helps us a little better control. We're getting rid of the weave motion so much and putting back into actually a crossing motion for traffic entering the landfill that's coming from the east. And again, it's felt this is a much safer condition, and this is not a funded improvement at this point, but city staff will be seeking funding opportunities in the coming days and years to find opportunities to possibly fund this improvement. Currently, this project is on schedule. It is the environmental fieldwork, which was looking at all the, the wetlands, looking at all the critical critters out there and things. All of that was actually completed back in late January. The geotechnical, as you can imagine, this is a little bit of a challenging location to build a bridge or build an overpass because of the soil conditions, but that geotechnical and survey work was also completed back in this past September. The preliminary design work has been done. That's kind of what you've seen right now in the, in the slides I showed you. And again, we are posting willingness. Now, the way that works, many times we come before City Council with a project, and we say, "Council, we're asking for your permission to move forward with this." If there's a project that we feel there's going to be a lot of input, a lot of public input on that, we will actually go to a public hearing. So we'll reach out to community, say that this date, this time, we'll have, ask you to come and share, uh, your thoughts of that. The other opportunity that happens on a project like this is if we're concerned that we don't have a lot of input, or it's only, in this case, it's like two landowners, two property owners out there to deal with. VDOT does what they call posting of willingness. In other words, they make a public announcement, "Hey, this project is ongoing. Here's information. If you have any concerns, reach out to us, and let's see if we can address your concerns and, and address anything you may have and make any changes that may be necessary," without going through the formal process of a public hearing. I would note for you, this is not a City of Suffolk project, even though it's being built within the City of Suffolk. VDOT is handling this project, the design and the construction of this project totally because, again, it is a regional project. It is something that all the cities on the south side of Hampton Roads benefits from. It's being funded through SIPS. So again, we didn't feel it was appropriate for city staff to manage this. VDOT is doing this as a regional project, and they're following their process. Uh, again, the wetland delineation has been done, the endangered and threatened species. We didn't know there were so many little critters out there, but there's a salamander, there's certainly a rattlesnake, uh, type of woodpecker. Those are the three items that have been identified thus far. At this point, everything preliminary does not show any fatal flaws on this, that those, those items while may be present, and believe at this point, the only one we absolutely sure is present is the rattlesnake. It does not seem to be an item that we cannot overcome. And again, those reports are being finalized, and I, I have not yet seen them. It said February, but I'm anticipating the next week, and so we'll see those final reports. Again, the next steps, again, this is being presented, what's called the inter-agency committee. That's one of the groups that VDOT takes big projects like this, too. It's all the environmental, it's the Army Corps of Engineers, it's the, it's the Coast Guard, it's the, everybody you can think of that might have some say, Fish and Wildlife and Department of Wildlife Resources. Everybody participates, this gets an opportunity to see it, and again, make any comments. Again, we are doing some detailed alternative analysis at this point over the next two months. And again, we're anticipating that the project permits, those Army Corps environmental permits that are going to be so necessary are going to be coming sometime in the July, August timeframe. So again, we will get a permit, we being the project, will get a permit from the Department of Environmental Quality from Virginia. It will get a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and also the DEQ Coastal Zone Management Consistency Permit that is required for this. So again, there's some key milestones. You can see, we're, we're working today towards a, what's called a field inspection in August of this year. Rightaway plans would be finished some, a couple of months after that. We hope to have this ready to start what's called bidability in March of '23 with advertisement in November of '23, award somewhere early in '24, and construction completed about a year later. If you are aware of the SIPS timetable, this corresponds at this point almost exactly with the SIPS need to open that next cell. There's a lot of things going on at SIPS that deals with what type of trash and how we deal. It has to do with recycling, it has to do with waste of energy. All of those things play in, but the executive director, SIPS is staying right on top of that to make sure that we're balancing all this so that the two projects coincide, and we do not have a disruption in the ability to dispose of our refuge from the Hampton Roads region.
And as Robert said, it takes in consideration of the wheel brader, uh, should they stop serving earlier due to this new steam plant on the base. This takes in that timeframe, which we would need, uh, probably more space at landfill, probably in 2027, if I remember correctly. I would also like to point out, on behalf of SIPS, that Robert sits on a subcommittee that's working with VDOT on this project.
Thank you. So a, as you see before you, here's the budget that's proposed at this point. Total budget's about a little over $39.3 million. Again, this is entirely a SIPS expenditure, and they're covering that. VDOT at this point has indicated they believe they're going to actually keep this project under budget, which in today's times would be ability and, and supply chain, maybe a little bit optimistic, but again, they're hoping in three years when we go to construction, everything is back to normal, and they can actually exceed, meet that budget and save some funds on that. And with that, I'm available to try to answer any questions you may have.
Council? Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you. This is some pretty good information, because as, as we all know, if you travel that portion of 58, where you're talking about where they cut over. I've traveled it enough to know, I've seen some vehicles come across the front of them. It's just unthinkable when you're rolling about 60 mile an hour, if you're rolling that fast. So this is a good project for getting that safety measure in play, and it could come, I wish it would come sooner than later, because, you know, we're going to continue to have a melee there every once in a while with that traffic. So, um, I hope to see this happen and hope to keep it on track, and we'll see where it ends up, but thank you for giving us the update. Very interesting.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm kind of, it's kind of weird how it's designed, the way they're going to fly it over, but, um, it probably makes sense if you, if you look at it a little bit, study it.
Yes, sir. And I, and I will share with you, early, early in this process, we looked at a number of different iterations of how to manage that, from flying over to the right and going across all six lanes to flying over in the median and only having to go over three lanes. Environmental concerns came into play, and actually it was interesting, the cost to fly over the six lanes was almost the same as flying over only three lanes because of some of the environmental concerns in that middle area where all the water is.
Thanks, Rob.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, sir. I'm not go good on you today. Uh, but anyway, this project is something that has been on the agenda for, I know, probably 10 or 12 years, trying to get this done. For cell 78, he was trying to push it forward without doing this project, and the city stood by their commitment to make sure that before they could get that CUP, that it would be a flower. We could not approve another one if they didn't do something with that intersection. So with that, I think it's a good plan. Uh, there have been different ones, one was There have been different ones, one was talking about going out to Nassman Parkway, but I liked this one a whole lot better than trying to put it out to Nassman Parkway in the community out there that I live in. But this, I think, is this where on going east on the ticket where the old railroad bed used to be to go over to the, fly over?
It does not quite encroach upon that rail bed, so that old rail bed actually has a City of Portcham water line in it, so it takes some of that ditch between the edge of the roadway and that abandoned rail line, and that's where the new road goes up. But again, so we're trying to thread the needle between a lot of different items out there, but yes, sir.
Well, actually, it's good for our city trucks and all that has to cross that road to go there, so it's a big safety item, and I know it's been a lot of accidents have happened out there, so I think this is a home run. We're trying to improve that intersection with that landfill, and we're going to continue to have it operating in our city, so I think that's a good project that you're working on.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor, any other questions or comments? Mr. Lewis, just one comment and a question, obviously this is good news, you've got a $39 million project that is well needed from a safety standpoint and looking into the future. My question is, I realize this doesn't cost us anything, but from SIPSA's standpoint, we got, if it's creating a $39 million debt, how would the debt service affect the tipping fee? Do we have any feel for that?
Yes, sir, I'll address this. As they laid this out there, it's not going to be bonds issued for this project. We will see some marginal increases over the next few years on the tipping rate of about $2 to $3 a ton about a couple of years there. Then once it's built and cashed out, then the tipping rate will go back, so you'll have a little wave in that, and that's how the board decide to fund that. There was no, they looked for, state funding wasn't available because of the formulas to get it, it was felt best to go ahead and, due to the current agreements with SIPSA, is go ahead and just cash fund it and move ahead in that fashion. I can bring you back the, what those rates were projected.
I was just wondering, so the methodology would be to increase the tipping fee somewhat between now and the time of construction and then kind of bank that money to pay for the project, so you don't have to issue any bonds?
That's correct.
And then it would go, hopefully go back down?
That's correct.
So it'd be temporary?
Actually, I believe a significant part of that money is already in the bank. So SIPSA's been very proactive in planning for this.
Okay, that's excellent.
And the initial increase, I believe, occurred last year.
Okay, that's excellent. Counselor, any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Lewis, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, may I offer one last comment for you. Within the next couple of days, the Department of Transportation is going to be putting up a website for this project that'd be very similar to what we do on our website, that anybody will be able to log on and get up-to-the-minute information about the status of this project, the next phases, what's going on. As soon as that becomes available, I will share that with members of council, so again, you can get the latest information.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, March 16, 2022, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
So moved.
Motion for approval, Councilman Ward?
Second.
Second, Councilman Ward, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow? Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Duman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time? If so, please explain the guidelines.
Yes, Mayor Duman, there are individuals registered to speak this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "non-agenda speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Donna Washington, 205 Victory Place, representing Self regarding litter issues. Our next speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding city council.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn White at 4216 Coltrane Avenue in the City of Suffolk, Pewsville, Virginia. I just want to speak on a few items that I've noticed here at council recently. I'm going to go back to January 5th. On January 5th, where you passed the ordinance to take the two homes for the drainage program. Now, we discovered in the public hearing in November that nothing's going to happen until either '23 through '25, and we were wondering, why would you pass an ordinance this year and nothing's going to happen till way down the line? These are some concerns we're having, and we asked for a motion or result to rescind that. Nobody gave us any motion on that. So again, I stand before you because you're going to take people houses, and one man might be going off to war, to the Ukraine, because he is an active military person. So you all are praying for Ukraine, what about praying for the United States and the people that have to go over there, and you're taking their homes while they're going? And also the young lady that spoke before you, January 5th, you're taking her home and she has a young daughter there. Just think about if that was you and your young daughter. Then the elderly lady came here and you all rescinded hers, told her, "Okay, we hope you and your mother be okay in your home, because we've taken care of this," but you still haven't taken care of Pewsville. And another thing, now that we have one councilperson, could you please give him some consideration? I've sat here at council and I've listened to him ask for meetings, ask for information, and you act as if he doesn't even exist, and that's Councilman Lou Ward. But I tell you what, if he needs a secretary, Carolyn White is here. I'm going to give him all the information he needs and more. If he needs somebody to stand for him, Carolyn White will be here. So I'd just like to let you all know. And Brother Johnson, I thank you for speaking again today. Boy, you're just getting bolder and bolder. History, history, history is all over Suffolk, Virginia, from the World War I's to the Civil Wars, all that's history right here in Suffolk. I read the book, I hadn't read it, my daughter read it, what's The Color of Water? I don't know if you all have read that, but a young man came right here with his family, and they lived here for a while, they came from New York, and he wrote about Suffolk. And again, Lou, if you need a journalist, Carolyn White is here, because I got a number of history, historical things to tell you and share with you, okay? I'm here, and if you want to publish it, I'm ready to publish it, okay? So don't be afraid, I got your back. God bless you.
Our final speaker this evening is Pamela Brandy, 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding city issues.
My address has already been read. I am speaking as one of the representatives and leaders of Pewsville Civic League on behalf of all residents in Pewsville, Chesapeake and Suffolk. One of the first things that I want to address is that we have a resident that have property in Pewsville, have a problem with taxes, and came down here yesterday and spoke to the city treasurer, trying to get some help with the property, paid some money on the property and understand that it should have helped to get things out of auction. Then it was told to go to the commissioner's office and talk to the commissioner. And so not only did he go, I went with him, because I was also here yesterday morning, first thing with that particular resident, asking for assistance. It's amazing how the commissioner would not talk to us, and the secretary, the clerk there, she claimed that he was in court. And the only way that we can get any answer is if we did something by email. Well, it was done by email, because I had the permission from the resident to email the commissioner to get some help. At the same time, we didn't get any help, everybody was running from one place to the other, and no one wants to be able to address the resident. And he reached out to Vice Mayor, trying to get some help, and people were still getting running. And again, this morning, we were there, trying to still get some answers to the question. It's amazing how there's one price on fees for everybody else or for African-American people that own property in Pewsville and a different price for everybody else. We cannot get an answer on how much the taxes and fees be, because there's only one person can give that answer, but that person, the commissioner, would not meet with us, they would not schedule an appointment, the clerk would not schedule an appointment, and even asking via email to have an appointment with the commissioner, you cannot. So I would really appreciate that the commissioner, and you all can ask the commissioner to come to city council to be able to address the concerns, since he will not address the concerns of the resident in his office. That is unheard of. And then you expect that you want to give this high price on the payment that the residents have to pay, but don't nobody know what it is until you give up money? This is ridiculous. You're still stealing from African-American people, and especially the elderly, and I have spoke out many times before that I have three passions in life, for the elderly, for the disabled, and the youth. And as a civic league leader in Pewsville, I am doing just that, but I need you all to help out. I hear you talk about historical. Well, guess what? It has been said and is known, Pewsville is a historical black community founded by free slaves. Now, you talked about easement to be able to allow people to get into places. There are a lot of property that are owned by some of those slaves' ancestors, that they cannot get to their property, they cannot build on their property. However, Suffolk, you all told us that you have many money that's allotted for Pewsville. Well, guess what? When are you going to put it in there? You did pavement of streets that didn't need to be paved, but yet there are many paper streets in Pewsville that needs to be paved, so the owners can stop paying taxes on property that they cannot even build on. That is unheard of. And when we going to do some historical landmarks for Pewsville, which it is? You're building around us and you're allowing builders to be able to build little subdivision in Pewsville, but the people that live there owe their lives, and the elderly, nobody's taking care of them. When are you going to help them? When are you going to help the elderly understand what's going on in the process? And I can understand process, and I can understand your website to a certain extent, but it was not until today, somebody wanted to explain to me and the process of how to work through y'all website. So if I, that has more understanding than the elderly, had difficulty with the website, what do you think the elderly have? And a lot of them don't even have computers. And then to talk to somebody, the only way you can get an answer is through an email, and you're sitting in the office of the person, and that residence was in the office with the councilman, because at first, his clerk said he was going to court, but yet, 10 minutes later, he's in his office and would not even answer. The resident there said that they had to talk to this, get an answer via email, but they never sent the email to the resident. It talked some information about that residence to me, and the resident was right in the office. So I ask you to start doing what you told us that you were going to do. You have funds for Pewsville, let's put it in Pewsville, let's open up the paper street that you all should have been, and when you talk about Rose and Wall, you also got money for Pewsville underneath that as well. You got money for Pewsville on many occasions.
That concludes the time allocated, Mayor.
Open up the streets, open up the COVIDs, and let the residents have their property and their homes. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers.
We now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
There are no additions to tonight's agenda.
Is there any new, are there any new business items that require the action of city council for consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask if Media and Community Relations Director Tim Kelly has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Believe it or not, it's not too early to start thinking about summer. Suffolk Parks and Recreation is offering a free lifeguard certification for all individuals who commit to work the 2022 summer season at Cypress Park Pool. Lifeguard candidates will be certified by an American Red Cross instructor. Classes and the opportunity to apply for a lifeguard position are available to candidates 16 years and up, no experience is required. For more information and to register, contact Suffolk Parks and Rec. The city assessor would like to advise that his office has completed the reassessment and notices of proposed values for July 1st, 2022, and these are being prepared for mailing. Property owners should receive the notice by the end of next week. If anyone needs to discuss their assessment with an appraiser, informal appeals be held in the office by appointment or by telephone from March 14th through April the 8th. The Board of Equalization will hold hearings during the month of May, those dates yet to be determined. Forms for BOE appeals will be available on the assessor's website beginning March the 14th. Property owners can call and request a form be emailed to them, or they can pick one up at the assessor's office, which is open Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Suffolk Public Works is making it easier for citizens to easily inform the Department of certain issues. The new report and issue webpage includes links to report concerns, including roadways, traffic signals and signs, streetlight outages, trash and recycling, illicit discharges, and mosquito control. The report and issue webpage is listed on the Public Works section of the city website. Public Works is also seeing an input from residents, business owners, and other stakeholders about flooding within the community. The purpose of this input is to identify flood mitigation projects and develop a resilience plan focused on reducing flooding and increase resiliency. The plan will enable the city to apply for Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund grants to partially fund the identified projects. The survey is open from March 1st through March 31st of this year. The annual juried photography exhibit is returning to the Suffolk Art Gallery, now in its 38th year. This exhibit is the largest and longest-running juried exhibition of photographic works in Hampton Roads. The opening awards reception is Saturday, March 5th from 4 until 6, to celebrate the many photographers on display and congratulate the winning artists. The exhibit will be on display through April 15th. In case you want to know, the art gallery is open Tuesdays through Saturdays from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., Sundays from 1 to 5. All exhibits and opening receptions at the art gallery are free and open to the public. Suffolk residents can join with Keep Suffolk Beautiful and AskHRGreen.org for the Great American Cleanup on March 25th and March 26th. In Suffolk for 2021, 115 residents volunteered and donated a total of 325 hours of work. Their efforts succeeded in collecting 141 bags of trash and 15 tires, totaling an over 3,800 pounds of debris removed. This year, Keep Suffolk Beautiful hopes to make the 2022 Great American Cleanup better than ever by signing up more volunteers and, of course, disposing of more waste. If you want to join the Great American Cleanup, register at AskHRGreen.org/cleanup. Don't forget to move your clocks ahead one hour, that'll be on Saturday, March 13th, actually Sunday, March 13th at 2 a.m., as daylight savings time will begin that morning. This is also a good time to test and change out the batteries in your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Virginia Department of Health has two upcoming COVID-19 testing events scheduled at the East Suffolk Recreation Center, dates March 11th and March 25th, both of them will be from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And again, we've been reminding you for quite some time, we'll keep doing so, make sure we get the information out there. If you're looking for a COVID vaccine, or you want to find out about some testing locations, the Virginia Department of Health has some information that's available online. They also still have the call center that's open at 877-829-4682, if you'd like to talk to someone, and they can direct you, of course, to the proper places where you can get the vaccine or the testing done. And again, we leave you with the ways we communicate with our residents and business owners, the number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, I always remind people of it, 514-4000. You want to get connected to city services, you have questions, we have staff there that can help and get you directed properly. With that, I'll say good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Sir.
I'll now move on to announcements from city council, and we're going to start with Councilperson Butler Barlow.
I knew I was going to be first, and I'm not ready. Thank you, Mayor. I just appreciate that it's been a quiet meeting tonight and appreciate everyone's input. I do want to encourage everybody, I like that Public Works is asking for public comment about the resiliency program, and I encourage everybody that is impacted by stormwater, flooding, et cetera, that we talk about so much in this body, could pay attention to that survey and fill it out. And... And again, appreciate Public Works for reaching out and asking for folks' input. And other than that, like I said, it's been kind of a quiet week, so thank you, and I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson.
I'm going to be brief as well. First, I'd like to extend my personal sympathy to the family of Tommy Underwood. When I first decided to run for council, Mr. Underwood was one of the people that encouraged me to do it, and ever since I've been on council, it wasn't too many months that he didn't slip by to tell me what I was doing right and wrong. He was a real asset to this city. He was from my borough, and we will sorely miss him. So I would like to give my sympathy to his family. We all grew up together, so. The other thing I want to comment on, and Ukraine, I do think that as a world, we all need to recognize what's going on. This could be us, it could be any of us, and everybody that recognizes that a free world is the right kind of world to live in, the kind of world we want to live in, we need to all put our hearts out there and make sure that we do whatever we can do to make sure that those people are looked after in some fashion. So with that, I'm going to say good night.
Councilman Fawcett.
Just want to say, great meeting. Thanks to everybody. Have nothing, so see you next meeting.
Who are you and what have you done with Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, that was a shock. Wow. Well, I won't be long. Wow. I met with some citizens on the Railroad Avenue in Jericho, and they would like to have the trees near the railroad track cut back, because they are concerned about the people hanging out around the trees and hiding behind those. It seemed like when they come home at night, they're worried about the people hanging out, and people are afraid when they get out of their vehicles and go into their homes. So if you can get someone to take a look at that, Mr. City Manager, I really would appreciate it. Also, I received a call from Mr. Spate concerning Greenway Road and White Marsh Road flooding, and the lack of a shoulder beside the road. So I have his number, if somebody can reach out to him. I also received calls concerning trash cans being left out on curbs after Trash Collection Day in the Greenfield Crescent and the South Suffolk Pleasant Hill community. The citizens in those areas would like to see some type of enforcement put in place, so people would just take the trash cans in after Collection Day. With that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Ward.
Well, I just want to carry on. Like I said, I had to wait for 10 years to do the redistricting. I want to thank the council again for choosing map C. But during the last week or so, I was just trying to watch the Suffolk News-Hurl, and by looking for the Suffolk News-Hurl, I didn't notice that they had mentioned the redistricting. It was a joint effort for people of the community of Suffolk to near wait. But, matter of fact, I went and talked with, when I talked to Mr. Steve Stewart, I knew him from time when he was here, and before I knew him, from the city of Franklin, when he used to do the paper there. And also, I went and talked with him, and I mean, I had a good conversation, because we knew each other. And I was so impressed with the story with Jimmy wrote, LeGray, LeGra, I don't want to mention names, but you had, that's one of the best stories. I don't get much story, but it was the best story told about me. I couldn't believe it. And I got a few phone calls, but I thank you so much for doing that job. It was a great, great time for me, and I really appreciate it, what you did. You took your time and wrote so many things. I didn't know I said that much, but that was great, and I really appreciate that. And I wanted to say another thing. The more and more we talk, it seems like the more and more we got some things going on. One thing, Councilman Johnson, what you said mean a lot. Thank you so much. You had the confidence in me, and you wasn't scared to hold it back, and you put it in print. I really appreciate that, and I felt the same way that not only you, but the city had confidence in me to deliver that map, and I really thank you for putting it out there like that. Pewsville, 10 years is a long time, but you know what? I want Al, me and Al have been talking, and the information y'all think y'all need, Al Moore will have a problem giving to me, and we'll try to find out. I hope Al wrote some of this stuff down, and we can try to get what y'all need. And also, we already have plans of coming out to Pewsville with Mr. Lewis. So we already, we was on a path of doing what's right for Pewsville. So like I said, keep coming, keep doing what's not being done, and we're going to make sure we're going to take care of that, and I appreciate y'all coming. With that, I'll say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to make mine short tonight, too, then, right? I bet, right? First of all, I'd like to say my condolences to the Underwood family. Tom and I served on council together for the four years that he was, well, two years with him. He went on council in '94, and I went on in '96, but I knew him before that, and he was a great person. And after he found out that I was in, had been in the Navy, and he was in the Navy, we had a lot of bonding, to talk about the Navy and some of the experience we had in the Navy and whatnot. Then we talked about the city, and he had the city at heart, and he believed in the city, and he showed that. And even after he left council, you could still find him at Hardest up there on 58. Just about every morning, he and his little group would be up there and talking politics and what's going on in the city. So if you, I used to go up there sometimes, just get some good information of what's taking place, what they're thinking, what we need to try to do to improve the quality of life here in the city. So my condolences go deeply out to that family. Ukraine, I tell you, that is something that I think everybody is really being hurt by, and I think it's something I know that it looks like a lot of people is doing what they are supposed to do to support them, and I think everyone should support them, because they're in a situation that could be anywhere. And it's sad, with some of the comments being made about the nuclear button being ready, I don't think any of us want to see that. That could be devastating to all of us. So I hope that that's just talk, and not something that they're really serious about, thinking about doing. So we need to stay on our knees in prayer, and God is able, and He will answer prayers, and I know that He will take care of us. So my final comment, Mr. Manager, on Bob White Lane, that has been going on there for over a year, with the resurfaces that came in and tore it up for that new subdivision, put water and stuff in there, and they have not completed. And that is really causing a serious problem to the residents up there, and this has been over a year, and that's just too long to have someone that have bought their homes in there and come in there and have to go through that for that long period of time. So I know we have been talking about this, supposedly getting some timeframe that this could be taken care of, and the people are waiting, because I'm getting calls, when they're going to start, what date it's going to be. So as soon as we can find out something, I'd appreciate, let me know, so we can try to calm the nerves of some of the people up there that's having these problems. And with that, I took my three minutes, and I'll say good evening.
That was pretty quick. I, too, want to offer my condolences to the Underwood family. I was not fortunate enough to know Mr. Underwood as long as the vice mayor, but not long after I was elected to my first term on council, he called me, and we talked, and he offered some advice, which I listened to. And he was also a good friend with Jim McCallas, you know, our ex-city manager and worked 35, probably close, a long time for the city in planning. And they used to meet at George's every now and then for lunch, and every now and then they would invite me to show up. But he was just as genuine and intelligent and honorable person as you would ever want to meet, and he was steady, encouraging me to do what I was doing. You know, if I was doing something right, he'd say, Mike, that was really good, what you brought up, and what you did, what you did, but you may want to think about so-and-so. And I know he will be missed by all who had the good fortune to know him. And with that, I'm going to, I do want to talk about Ukraine a little bit, to address what's happening, and it's about 5,700 miles from here. That's a long ways. And as we speak, there's 42 million Ukrainians fighting for their continued independence and freedom, and it's a freedom that we take for granted every day. I know I do. I don't think about it. These events have a special meaning to me, because actually, I'm of Ukrainian descent. My grandmother, who was born December 2nd, 2013, in Kyiv, immigrated to the United States during the Bolshevik Revolution in 1917. She didn't have a phone. She fled the country with her four siblings, and two of their siblings actually perished during their journey. The youngest arrived at Ellis Island to begin their lives in this country. My grandmother learned her language, diligently followed the path to citizenship, and ultimately earned the right to take the oath of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. After settling in Boston, Mass., my grandmother and grandfather opened what I call a mom-and-pop grocery store back then. I remember starting at the age of 10. My parents would send me up there, and I'd visit during the summer and spend several weeks working in the store. I still remember the wood floor, the pickle barrel, penny candy, believe it or not, the head candy for a penny. They actually had some that was two for a penny, and you could pick it out, and that was the most fun part, and helping the customers using the old cash register. My grandfather also came to this country from Russia, had a heart attack early in life, and the burden of running the store fell solely on my grandmother. She worked for another decade, every day managing the store, raising four children, and taking care of my grandfather. My grandfather passed away in 1972, and my grandmother later went to work at a bakery. She worked until she was 82 years old. I remember visiting her in a nursing home, and will always remember her apologizing that, and I quote, "I don't want to be a burden." This was typical of her generation, exemplified her strength in character, always putting others ahead of herself. I'm certain that DNA is partially responsible for those times I'm able to exhibit some of those same qualities. Until recent events, I not thought about much about my grandmother's journey or what she must have endured. I also contemplate the what-ifs. We should all take a moment to put into perspective our own concerns when compared to the plight of the Ukrainians. We should stop and reflect on how fortunate we are to live in this great country. If all Ukrainians are as strong as my grandmother, I would surmise that Mr. Putin is in for one hell of a fight. Let us play for the Ukraine, and God bless America. And with that, I have two quotes tonight. I thought it would be relevant to do two quotes, because this is a husband and wife who do not need any introduction. The first is Corida Scott King, and her quote is, "Freedom and justice cannot be parceled out in pieces to suit political convenience. I don't believe you can stand for freedom for one group of people and deny it to others." And my second quote is by her husband, Martin Luther King Jr., and it is, "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression and cruelty by the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." And with that, I will say good evening and ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to. Second.
Got a second? All right, next. I thought y'all wanted to stay. And a second from the vice mayor? Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Fawcett.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Ward, Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.